All right, we're going to call to order the November 5th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council and Redevelopment Agency, I'm sorry, Redevelopment Successor Agency and Financing Authority. We're going to begin tonight as we do each week with the Pledge of Allegiance, so we'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which tonight's going to be led by Mayor Pro Tem Johansson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, to the stand, to our nation, to our freedom, liberty, and justice.
The council did not meet in closed session this evening, so we're going to proceed directly to our regular agenda items. Firstly, we congratulate the two members of the City Council who were re-elected last night overwhelmingly. Will the council be taking up the certification of the election results at a meeting, at the first meeting in December, but congratulations to both of you. So Item 1A is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda, but with-
Wait a second, congratulations to you. You were also on that ballot somewhere.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Kristoff. So Item 1A is Presentations by the Public on Matters Not on the Agenda, but Within the Jurisdiction of the City Council. As is noted on our agenda, we're prohibited by state law from taking action or having a discussion about items that are brought up under Item 1A, but it is an important item, opportunity for public forum on those elements, issues that are within our jurisdiction. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the public on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available near the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone gets a chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. We also have a couple of appeals hearings this evening, which will have a different set of time limits on them, but for all the other items, the limit is three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and that flip chart simply indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We take the yellow cards all the way up to the conclusion of the staff report on any particular item. Once the staff report is done and the council questions or the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional speaking requests, so if you have an intention to speak on an item, be sure to turn in the card as soon as you can, but definitely before the conclusion of the staff report on that item. Also, for a lot of folks speaking in public can cause some anxiety and emotional distress and divorce, and so we do ask that there not be any boos or cat calls, or actually even any applause or other demonstrations, and that we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have no items, no requests for speaking under Item 1A, so we're going to proceed to Item 1B, which is Council Communications. Are there any reports or other communications this evening? Councilmember Sandin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am reporting on the Universal Preschool for West Sacramento Executive Board meeting, which happened on October the 2nd. Let me keep my glasses on. At that meeting, we received an update on preschool expansion and preschool development grants, and we also discussed the City Livability and U.S. Conference of Mayors playbook and shared ideas about leveraging local and national coverage of the City Livability Award. We also approved the Universal Preschool for West Sacramento Annual Report and Evaluation Report Submission to First Five California, and we talked about recruitment for our community member vacancy, and that was just posted in City Lights, so there's information about that opening there. In addition, I know that the city manager reported at the last meeting, and I was not present, but from the reading of the minutes, that he reported a bit on the Metro Chamber of Commerce's study mission, and a couple of highlights for me from that program were looking at repurposing their civic infrastructure. They actually used an old post office and repurposed that into a public civic amenity, which is a visual arts museum. In addition, we visited the Nashville Entrepreneur Center, which was really inspiring, and I think something that we, you know, when we talk at our retreat or planning meeting, we may want to bring up and bounce that idea around. And also, we were able to look at their, the use of the riverfront and how they, their bridge infrastructure, both pedestrian bridges, as well as car and then their transit system. So I think it was, it was really a valuable experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Johansson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County Housing Met on October 23rd, and the most significant issue was the approval of the Bridge to Housing Program, which is the pilot program that the city and the county are embarking on, using the motels and the homeless pilot project. And the, I attended the Sacramento H2 Regional Preparedness Steering Committee, which is a group that has been assembled after, you may recall, a couple of months ago, I attended a Go Biz Conference of the Governor sponsored in the Bay Area on the rollout of zero emission vehicles, in particular hydrogen fuel cell vehicles. And so this group is basically a follow-up of that, and the goal is to get at least two fuel cell fueling stations in the Sacramento area. And the group consists of folks from the Sacramento District, California Fuel Cell Partnership, Department of General Services, SACOG, Valley Vision. And so, so basically, we've got, in West Sacramento, we've got the grand opening of the first public hydrogen fueling station on December 10th, and it's 3:00 to 4:30. I'm sure there's going to be some announcements going around and gearing up for that. And it looks like they've got possibly the one-sided in Sacramento at this point. So they're really focused on how to make these, these stations viable. It looks like for the first four or five years, they aren't going to be, so there's subsidies going in. There's a company called First Element, that what they do is they basically subsidize the fueling, the fuel itself, the dispensing equipment on sites, and they've got, they go after grant money. It looks like they've got commitments to do, or at least a goal to do 40 stations in the state next year. And so there really is kind of a rush now to get these stations in place, because five, four or five of the main car manufacturers next year are coming out with fuel cell cars, and so it needs fueling stations. So the car manufacturers have already spent about $10 billion to get the tank costs down and the hydrogen conversion stack costs down. So it looks like we will have, well, at least we'll have one, and they're going to get at least another in Sacramento for some redundancy, and that's going to probably be in the first part next year.
Thank you. I had two reports. First, the, I think we have an added council meeting existed, but the Secretary of Education convened, did I already report on this, the White House Early Learning Summit? No, okay, you would know. So the White House has been convening a series, I think, of six summits on early learning across the country. The California Summit was led by the Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, in San Francisco two weeks ago, and hosted by the White House and supported by several foundations and others. We were invited as the one city in the West to present about what we've done with Universal Preschool for West Sac, under the Promising Investments category at the summer. So it was, it was a fantastic showcase for the work that we've been doing, and also a lot of foundations and others that are, follow-up with the councilmember Sandin interested in, in helping to support that, that work. And also, First Five and others that have been investors in the program were there as well, so it was very, very positive. And Secretary Duncan at a town hall later in that day on the topic of early learning really, really sort of pitched the West Sacramento initiative and effort as a model for the country. So it was, it was, it was great to see. I mean, it was, it's not often that the White House picks on a little city like ours to, to feature in that way, but also to see the direct impact in terms of potential financial support for the, both of what we're already doing, and then to take it to the next level, as I know the for West Sac Board that councilmember Sandin shares is interested in doing. So that was fantastic. Earlier this week, the Transportation Committee for SACOG met, and we're working on the, as usual, we're working on the next 25-year metropolitan transportation plan. We have the, a similar problem that we've had in prior years, which is that there are, the amount of growth that was projected in the last plan is more growth than is actually scheduled to occur, particularly in the nearer years. That's largely because just the effect of the recession, and so we'll catch up eventually, but not in the near years. That has a couple of impacts. One is we can't justify the level of regional growth, population growth, and we don't have the financing to deliver the, the regional transportation infrastructure that we had planned for before. At the same time, I think it's much clearer than it was in the last plan five years ago, what a central investment priority fix-it-first is, and that older communities throughout the region are, I mean, streets and roads, sidewalks, and other transportation infrastructure is just, buses are in desperate need of repair. We are certainly in that, in that situation, although I mentioned, say, we're, almost everyone else is worse off than us because of Measure J and K. You know, we, at least the voters of this committee said, we're, we get it. We'll, we'll make a major investment to resurface every single road in the city, essentially as a result of that special sales tax, but that doesn't solve our problem forever. It just means we're not as bad off as many other cities in the, in the region. So we want to move more in that direction. The challenge on that, and it's going to be a very big political fight, as there always is in each one of these MTPs, is that to do that, to account for the reduced growth threshold, and also to move to a more fix-it-first philosophy, means some new projects have to go out. And by new projects, that means the new development projects have to go out. There's no projects in our city that are at risk, but the, you know, the classic Cordova Hills debate that we had in the last round, there's a lot of projects that are like that, that are sort of greenfield investments on the suburban edge, on the suburban edge that would convert farmland into, into development, and they are both, they're both more people than we actually need to accommodate in the plan, but also they're very expensive in terms of the highway interchanges and roads that you have to build to get, you know, connect to the mainline transportation system. So if we do that, then we, you know, we won't have enough resources to be able to meet the fix-it-first requirements, and we will be building more housing than is necessary in the region to accommodate that growth. So that's going to be one central issue. A subset of that, my guess is the key transportation project that's going to generate the biggest battles this upcoming cycle is going to be the, what's called the Connector Project. It's the connector between, it would run, it's essentially a highway that would run from Elk Grove up to Rancho Cordova to Folsom and then connect El Dorado. So it's a very, very high priority for those communities and for suburban Sacramento County. It's also incredibly expensive and incredibly growth-inducing on the farmland fringe of the region and outside of the urban, out of the urban growth footprint. So my guess is that will be the Cordova Hills, or if you've been around as long as Mr. Kristoff, it'll be the Watt Avenue Bridge. I mean, every year, every cycle, there's one project that is the big fight, and my guess is that's going to be that one. So it may come up in other forums as well. So, all right, so those are all the communications and reports. No assignments tonight, but it's the, it's our two-year cycle, so if members of the council could, you know, mark up what, if there are changes in your two-by-twos and commissions and boards, if you could let me know. And including some, it's our cycle back on a couple, like on the Yolo County Children's Alliance, some of the things that happen countywide that we rotate, there's probably a LaFgo change, Mr. Kristoff would know better than me, but it's, it's just time. So if you could, if you have the opportunity at some point soon to forward your proposed assignments, that would be terrific. And then Item 1C, similarly, the clerk has already put out the call for new appointments for the new cycle to city boards and commissions, and what's the deadline that you've established?
The end of the month.
End of this month, okay. So, and then as our, as our procedure, the, those applications, the nominee, that list and the application will be available to all the council members to, to review, to interview, if you so choose, to consider, and then we solicit nominations from each council member for each of the commissions as well. So, all right, thank you. Item two, then, is a presentation of a proclamation honoring Kenneth Rusich on his retirement. Is there motion on the proclamation? One second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Kristoff and seconded by Mr. Ledesma. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries unanimously, and the proclamation is adopted. I'd like to ask Mr. Kristoff, as the, our representative to the, to the JPA and to our, to our leading expert on this, on this topic, to, on our behalf, present the proclamation to Mr. Rusich.
Do that. Thanks, Bill.
Well, this guy's a real hero. He has protected this community for a lot of years. I personally have seen him out on the levees, plugging holes and digging ditches and packing sandbags and putting these sandbags around these little holes that try to pop up with water and all of this. And he has protected this community very well and done an outstanding job, and he and his staff are just as diligent as diligent can be. And I know this is something that's very dear and near to him, and this community has just really been very, very well-served by Mr. Ken Rusich. And so I have a proclamation that I'm going to read into the record. Whereas Ken Rusich retired over 37 years of service, a reclamation district 934 years as a district general manager. Whereas under Ken's leadership, RD 900 successfully protected West Sacramento residents and businesses from the threat of flooding through superior maintenance, over 90% of the city's levee system, operation and maintenance of 38 miles of inner drainage systems, and pumping, 11 pumping plants. Whereas Ken spent countless hours during winter storms, many times around the clock, inspecting the city's levees for early signs of trouble. Whereas he played a vital role in early detection of emergency operations and flood fighting efforts during the high-water events in 1983, 1986, that was a close one, 1997, and 2006. Whereas Ken also retired after 20 years of service as the first general manager of West Sacramento Flood Control Agency, whereas the city of, I mean, whereas the agency oversaw the importance of many local, state, and levee improvements in projects, the recent completion of the High Street project, the rivers, Sacramento bypass levee improvements, and the design of the city's biggest up-to-date project, which is the Southport Levee Improvement Project. Whereas he served on the Board of Directors of the California Central Valley Flood Control Association for over 20 years, whereas he served on the Board of California Valley Flood Control Association for over 20 years. He served as a Director of North Delta Water Agency for 20 years, representing the interests of water rights for the city of West Sacramento, and whereas he has been very acumen in his community through membership of the West Sacramento Rotary for over 35 years. He was Rotary President from 1987 and 1988, and coached and served on Board of Directors for the West Sacramento Girls Softball League for many years. Now, therefore, it be proclaimed that the City Council, the city of West Sacramento, does hereby honor Ken Rusich for his high-esteem service to the city of West Sacramento. Congratulations on a well-earned retirement after 37 years of distinguished and dedicated public service. Just a quick word. I can't imagine a staff and board trustees and the people I work with at the city being more supportive of what we do and, and made my life a lot easier. And certainly, this community has been extremely supportive of all of our flood control efforts, and, and of course, I live here, so I have a vested interest in making this stuff work too. So anyhow, it's, it's been a great career, and I've really enjoyed it. So, thank you.
Well, Mr. Kristoff's coming back up. I just want to add, I, it's so, Ken is so West Sacramento. I mean, the, he'll be on the levees, sometimes Tony or others, taking care of the smallest issue to make sure that nothing could possibly go wrong with this stretch of levee or that stretch of levee, driving along, checking everything out. One moment, the next moment, he'll be working on a half a billion dollar levy authorization project with no, with no sweat. Whatever needs to be done, Ken's there to do it with class, with patience, but urgency at the same time. And this project that we've been working on together in the development of West Safka, that Mr. Kristoff's been our representative on from the beginning, could have been a big test of any, most other agencies. There's, you know, there would be a lot of fighting and a lot of turf battles and all of that, and there hasn't been, not, not once. I mean, Arnie and Mr. Denton's been a key part of this as well, but Ken's just, whatever we need to do to protect this city, we will, we'll do it, we'll do it together. It doesn't matter whose name is on it, it doesn't matter who gets the credit, it doesn't matter what agency has the assignment, we've just got to get it done. And what a tremendous lesson for everyone in this community about what it really takes to make, to make greatness happen. So Ken, you're a class act, and I truly admire you, and I know so many other folks in the community do, and the folks that don't know you ought to be incredibly grateful for all the reasons that Mr. Kristoff said that you're keeping us and them safe every day and night. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda, which is Items 3 through 8. The man at our desk, the city manager, is requesting that we postpone Item 5 and to the, to the November 19th meeting of the council. That objection, that'll be the order. So the consent agenda is Items 3 through 8. Is there any item that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment?
No.
All right, then, is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Ms. Sandin. The consent agenda minus Item 5, we adopted. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. That motion carries, and the consent agenda is adopted. That brings us to Item 9 and, and Item 10, and I'm going to, we have a, these are two related items, and so we're going to consolidate the hearings on Item 9 and 10, because there's so many overlapping issues, certainly between the two, but also the overlapping issues for the council's consideration in terms of conditions and terms and policies. So we're, we will proceed in that, in that manner. So pursuant to the municipal code, Section 1.08.06, which establishes our appeal hearing procedures, I'm going to provide a summary of the procedures that we're going to follow this evening for this consolidated hearing of Items 9 and 10 together. First, in a moment, we'll, I'll open the public hearing, and then we'll ask members of the council to publicly announce any testimony or evidence that they may have received outside of the hearing process. This is, our term for that is ex parte communications, so if council members have had any communications with anyone about the item outside of this hearing. Then, then after that, we'll ask council members to announce to disclose any conflicts of financial interest with a material effect at stake at either one, either 9 or 10, and if that is the case, then the council member will disqualify himself or herself from consideration of that item. Following that, we'll specify the time that the applicant and appellant have for speaking. Actually, I'll indicate that at this, at this point. The appellants and the underlying applicants for those projects that don't have an appellant will be each allocated five minutes for their presentations, and I'll just, and I will review it after the, this summary, just to be clear for who is who, because it's, they're overlapping appellants and applicants in this, in this case. So, but they will each have five minutes for the consolidated, for the consolidated item. So each, each individual will be able to speak for that five minutes. They're speaking on behalf of themselves as appellate or applicants, and so we do not expect that they will, in addition, have someone else speak on their behalf, an attorney or a consultant or, or a partner or anything of that nature, that they are assigned as the appellant that five minutes, not the individual is assigned the five minutes and so forth. So the, the appellant will first present their testimony and relevant evidence with respect to their appeal, and we consider evidence to be relevant if it proves or disproves a material fact that is in dispute. Then the applicants, in the one case, will be provided that same opportunity. Following the presentations by the appellants and applicants, the members of the public will be given the opportunity to present testimony. Again, let me emphasize, for the appellants and applicants, it's not an opportunity to get another allotment of time by asking someone else on the project team or another owner, for example, to, to make a presentation, and public comment will be limited to three minutes each. Following the public testimony, the appellants will be, have an opportunity to respond to testimony or evidence that has been made during this hearing, but may not introduce new testimony or evidence or restate their direct testimony. So that simply means you can't, don't, please don't reread your, your opening testimony, and don't bring up new issues or new facts. The purpose of the rebuttal period at the end is to address issues that have been raised by folks on the other side, essentially of that same issue. Following that, we'll close or continue the public hearing at the council's discretion, and if we haven't continued the public hearing, then we will deliberate on the matter and adopt findings if appropriate, and the final decision on the, on either one of these items may be deferred if the council determines that draft, draft findings need to be prepared by our staff for formal consideration at a future date. So that is the summary of our procedures. It sounds more complicated than it is, but that's, that's how, that's how we roll. So let me, let me clear the, the particular appellants that are, that are going to have five minutes, and the others will have three. So first, we will hear from the appellants on the Crown Castle case, which is item number nine, and we will then hear from the appellants on Item 10, John Sneed, and then from the underlying applicant on Item 10, which is Rick Hart, and, and in all those cases, any of, anyone else that they wish to have, share in that time with them. Following that, we'll hear the, the public testimony as well. So are there questions from the council about any of that at this stage? All right, then, let me ask first if there are any ex parte communications that have been received outside of the hearing process for any member of the council to disclose?
No.
All right, do it. Does any member of the council have a conflict of financial interest with a material effect in either of these items? All right, then, we will proceed to the, I'm going to open the public hearing itself and begin by inviting the appellants on, on Item 9, and just remember, we're consolidating both. So if you have comments on either or both 9 or 10, they're appropriate during the time allocation that you have. So the appellants for, on Item Number 9, on behalf of Crown Castle, Tim Page and Joe Parker, I believe.
Chris, could you, could you go to Slide 4, please? Good evening, congratulations, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, on your victories last night, and Councilmember Ledesma, and good evening, Councilmembers Kristoff and Sandin. Councilmember Ledesma, and good evening, Councilmembers Kristoff and Sandin. I'm going to run through this as quick as I can, given the time limit here. I've got a number of slot, there, thank you, appreciate that. Crown Castle has a number of long-term contracts with our carriers. So, we have a contract with T-Mobile that expires in 2037, with Verizon that expires 2029, Nextel goes out to 2037, and all of these carriers are located on the tower that we need to move, that we need to relocate. The existing contracts on these carriers require that the carriers move to the new Crown Tower as long as their RF objectives are met, which they are. One of Crown's responsibilities outlined in the contracts is that we have to manage this infrastructure 24/7, 365 days a year. We can't locate on the Hart parcel because they're going to have, they will have no access or power for an undetermined amount of time, so it's not a viable candidate for us. I'd like to move on quickly to some of the reasons why Planning Commission denied our project, and it has a lot to do with these photosims that are in front of you. So, if you look at these, the Planning Commission felt that the Crown project would impair the integrity of the neighborhood and the Hart project would not. These photosims clearly show the contrary. Can you click to the number five, please? Thank you. So, here's another view of the same parcels, obviously a lot clearer, and you can tell they would equally impact the neighborhood, but we cannot tell which one would have greater impact than the other one. Can you click to the next one, Chris, please? This is a view from Linden Road, and then click to the other one, please, Chris, when you can. And, whoop, there's a number six, I believe. There should be one more, I'm sorry. Okay, so this is the one, this is the existing tower that's currently there now, and then the proposed location on the project location that got denied. So, if you turn to page 15 of the staff report, section A6, there's a response from Greg Fabian to David Tilly, and the response clearly states the problems with constructing the Hart project before the levy improvements are in place. As you can see, the access to the site and the power is going to be demolished as a part of the levy project, and we have to move the tower to a place that's out of the sphere of influence because it's currently already in that influence, and it doesn't make sense to move it on to the Hart parcel because it continues to be affected by the levy improvements. So, just real quick, with your approval tonight, we can commit to moving the tower per the city's request and West Safka's request, and at this time, I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Joe Parker.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Joe Parker. Just very briefly, I expect to hear from Mr. Hart tonight that Crown continues its negotiations with him to secure a leasehold interest. That's absolutely correct. This is something that Crown has pursued and considered during the course of these hearings and continues to do so at the present time. The agreement at issue is an option agreement, which grants Crown the right to consider Mr. Hart's property as a viable alternative should that become necessary. And those discussions have progressed to the extent that we have Mr. Hart's red lines to the agreement, which he sent to my clients this afternoon. I bring that to your attention because I expect his, bringing it to your attention is somehow intended to prejudice you into thinking that Crown's concerns about the buildability of the site on his property are not credible, and that's simply not the case. We take these relocations very seriously, particularly the need to maintain seamless coverage from the time that the site is condemned to the time that the new site is built and coverage is cut over to the new site. We're also required to comply with federal law, and that is to diligently pursue all alternatives that are available to us so that I can fairly and accurately represent to you that the site that we selected is the least intrusive means set forth in the federal standard. And to that end, securing a secondary option here makes good sense, particularly given Planning Commission's evaluation of these projects, and particularly where I believe Planning Commission has not considered some very fundamental issues that led us to conclude that the Hart property was not the best choice for Crown. Therefore, in contest, it's very important that we take all steps necessary to consider the site, and that includes consideration of sites that have building issues like the Hart property. So, I ask you tonight not to let that color your judgment, but instead, consider that my client is doing everything it can in good faith to move our site and, at the same time, find a home that does not disrupt coverage. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're now going to hear from the appellant on item 10. Who is John Sneed? Hi, John.
Do you want to hear the appellate on item number 10?
Yes.
Okay.
But the hearing is, but the comments can pertain to both items.
Okay. Thank you for hearing my appeal on the Crown approval. Could I have slides one and two, please? Thank you. The city of West Sacramento wireless telecommunications policy states in section two that in granting wireless telecommunications facility permit, the granting, the Planning Commission, because it went to them first, shall find the following. They were asked to find and prove a gap in coverage. Well, next slide, please. The applicant said in a letter dated March 11th that the applicant proposes to build a tower and to create infrastructure sufficient to accommodate many wireless carriers. However, applicant is not proposing to install communications antennas and equipment until wireless carriers are prepared to move there and their facilities. For this reason, the applicant does not include a service area map. Well, you cannot possibly prove a gap in coverage if you do not have antennas and something that transmits that over to the wireless carriers. So, next slide, please. The maximum distance from a residentially zoned property required, these are all excerpts from the telecommunications policy. The telecommunications facility will be 500 feet, provided the applicant can demonstrate that the proposed facility would eliminate or substantially reduce one or more significant gaps in coverage in the carrier network and that service to the city that the facility utilizes stealthing and design, et cetera. Once again, without any antennas, there can be no proof and no demonstration, that's which is required in the telecommunications policy, that there's a gap in coverage. Also, as far as not impair the neighborhood in the city, we had three different existing homeowners speak to the Planning Commission that said they did not want this in their backyard, which was what it would be on the Hart property, the homeowners that exist there now. Some of them are here in the audience today. So, if you take a look at this facility right now that's been approved in the Hart, without any antennas on it, it could potentially be a faux tree, which would definitely impair the integrity of the neighborhood if you have a big structure with no function to it whatsoever. Also, in addition to that, one of the things in the telecommunications policy is that one of the requirements is that you don't affect the utilities or the access roads. Well, we know for a fact, due to the levy improvements in this particular area, there's going to be no access roads, and the utilities are definitely going to be affected. And Mr. Hart has said that he would put temporary power in the levy, which means it will have to be poles, temporary poles within the levy prism, and that in itself creates a whole lot of problems with, as we know, the Central Valley Flood Board looks at drilling holes in their levy and putting temporary poles, and also conduits in the levy is a very serious matter. Also, under CUP 1403, does not meet general condition number one, which states that proposed wireless telecommunications facility must be compatible with the community. This particularly small portion of land that is going to be cut out of a nine acre spot is eight tenths of an acre, which does not meet the RRR zone for the neighborhood and the rest of the zoning requirements of a minimum, which is a minimum of one acre. Also, we described in our letter of appeal, three deficiencies we think we found in the CUP, I mean, excuse me, in the SEQA document, and the first being that section nine hydrology. The applicant is going to be trying to put in portable telephone and utility lines in the levy, as I mentioned earlier, and then a permanent utility line in what he's calling the operation and maintenance corridor. These are looked at in SEQA as very potentially serious events in that, you know, in case of a high water event, water takes the path of least resistance and can follow conduits and stuff, so it could definitely be, have an impact during high water events. Having the applicant's permanent utilities in the O and M corridor impacts sections number eight in the SEQA document also, under hazards. Also, under section four, in the SEQA document, it was marked no impact under section four, which would, the project would conflict with any local policies and ordinances. However, the applicant has a fire department turnaround on his property, just like in my proposed property, this fire department turnaround goes underneath heritage oak trees on his property and was approved, just like there's heritage oak trees on my property that the fire department would need to go around. So, it was marked no impact, and you could have an impact. Also, under section number 18 under the SEQA document, there's mandatory findings of significance. Okay. Excuse me, I'm out of time.
I have to apologize.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sneed. Next is Rick Hart. I'm not sure whether Mr. Manning is joining.
Members of the council, thank you.
Question, before we get started, do we get to talk three minutes on the project nine?
It's fully consolidated, so the five minutes is on.
The five minutes is for both?
Correct.
Okay.
And in the public portion of the meeting, the three minutes will also be for both. So, anyone else who wishes to speak, but no one can speak more than once.
Oh, okay, so our five, once we do five minutes, we're done?
Correct.
Okay, then, can we go with this Sneed slideshow? Sorry, because that makes a difference in the, it is item number nine, yes, sorry. You want to go first?
Sure. Got it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Brian Manning, and I'm here on behalf of Rick Hart. Talking about the Crown Castle appeal, the reasons for appeal I stated in the staff report is Crown Castle is obligated to provide coverage to those carriers that are currently on its tower. That's a non-issue now that we are in negotiations and there's been an option agreement that has been executed by Mr. Hart. They also state that they have to go forward with the, an obligation to provide coverage, but that's not consistent with the eminent domain law. When a property is acquired pursuant to CCP 1265.110, that lease terminates. Crown has provided no information to the contrary. And also, they consistently talk about, they have contracts that need to be fulfilled and the carriers have to come over. They've provided nothing to either the Planning Commission or the council to demonstrate that. Again, they talked a lot about the levy improvements, but those are all red hearings. There's nothing going to be within the levy prism. I don't know where that information comes from. There will be access, there will be power, both interim and permanent. That's been a non-issue. There's been correspondence between West Safka and Mr. Hart. They're talking about the federal preemption. Crown has failed to establish that there is a significant gap in coverage because the South River property was, or project was approved, and also what we, so basically, what you're looking at is you're comparing the two projects, which one is better aesthetically. You still have that discretion even under federal law. In the 11-page letter that was sent by their attorney, they discussed not one single item of comparison between the Hart project and their project. But we, in your staff report, there are numerous items that have been addressed in there, and I'm running short on time, so I'll give it over to Mr. Hart, but we ask that you please deny.
Okay. Let's go to Mr. Sneed's. The first item that wasn't addressed by the staff is this is an email from Dina about what the damage is going to do to the oak trees. Now, this will be spoke on later in the evening in more detail, but the first inclination is this road will kill three oak trees, one of them 150, 200 years old. Here in simple. The next slide. Okay, now, here's their project. What you don't see in their project, you see in everybody else's project, is actual dimensions. They leave them off. They give you a nice big border, make things look big, but the bottom line is these boxes are five feet, five to seven feet tops from their neighbors, and the tower is 30 feet away, all from residential. It's just, this is where the Planning Commission had issues, and you'll see that also. They talk about they're going to build a road that supports a fire truck but doesn't impact the trees, has the same permeability, gets 95% compaction. This is an email for an engineer saying that road doesn't exist, it is impossible. You will not be able to do that. It doesn't, it is not, it doesn't happen. You cannot build a 95% compaction road, keep the same permeability. That's the issue the Planning Commission had. I mean, they wanted answers to these questions, and they never got them. Let's go to the next one. West Safka is going to have to reimburse Crown for all of these improvements to this property. They got to install a new well, they got to cap the existing well, they got to build a new state-of-the-art leach field above ground that, I don't even know how it works, I haven't even seen that yet. Tree mitigation at $45,000, not counting the oak trees, okay? You got 150 to 200-year-old oaks, they're going to kill. That'll be proven later. They're also going to do damage to, they're covering up 50% of the neighbor's root system. They're going to build a road that engineer state is impossible, and the cell tower's going to be built on an existing leach field. I don't know how that works out, but the compaction issues has got to be a problem. All that is going to be paid for by West Safka. They're writing that check because they wouldn't be doing that project if somebody else wasn't paying for it. I can tell you that right now. There's no way in hell. None of this stuff, nothing affects ours, and we'll go into that later. And West Safka will be here to talk on their own. So, Crown Castle project will substantially impact the community and cause greater burden on the neighborhood than the Hart project. Impacts on the Crown project, more intrusive to the surrounding residentially zoned property. It's 30 feet and five feet away. I'm further away on my carrier box than they are with their tower. I mean, it's a huge difference. It's not little. Removal and potential to the oaks, potential Swanson Hawk, and they still haven't figured out where they're going to put their replacement septic tank because there's not enough room. You can't fit a house and everything else on there. The next slide, this is the agreement I have with Crown. They prepared it, we signed it. So, I don't know what they consider agreement, but Crown's getting this deal one way or another. In conclusion, we just hope you deny 1402, and that's it.
All right, thank you.
Fast.
All right, yeah, that's fast. So, I appreciate, thank you to all three. Those were, I know it's an aggressive timeframe, and they were certainly packed with content, so appreciate, appreciate your efforts to try to consolidate and to be brief. All right, so now, we're going to proceed to the requests we have from members of the public to speak on the item, and the first is by Bill Denton. Hmm? You? You're up. Sorry, Bill.
Start with, congratulations, Mayor, on being re-elected and everybody else. The, my name is Bill Denton. I am president of Reclamation District 900 and chairman of the West Safka at the present And the West Safka has a responsibility to all the people of West Sacramento to treat everyone equally. As you know, we are in the process of acquiring property in Southport. Mr. Hart is one of the areas, he wishes to build a cell tower on his property and the size, and it has a lot of problems, which boils down to power and access and that sort of thing. But the key to the thing, to really make it smooth, so everybody really understands, you know, what's happening is, one, Mr. Hart should take out a building permit. That's true with no matter who's going to build anything, take out a building permit. Build his tower. When West Safka gets out on the bid in fall of 2015, we will be responsible to provide access to his property and the utilities during and after construction, the same as everyone in the area that's affected by the project. I'm positive that West Safka staff will work out the problems that come up, regardless of who the problem is or where it's placed. That's what's going to happen. It's just kind of ridiculous to me, I sit back and I listen to this, and I talk to people and whatnot, and I find that there's a lot of misinformation. to people and, and whatnot, and I find that there's a lot of misinformation that comes up, and it's not right. West Safka has a fiduciary responsibility to this community, and we're going to live up to it, no matter what. Thank you.
Bill, can I, can I, Bill, can I, can I ask you, so, on both of these projects then, are, are you, are you—
Pardon?
Are you saying that West Safka would be, would make it work regardless of which property?
Well, we're going to, we're going to build the, the levy. That's number one.
Okay.
And there's going to be a frontage road at the bottom of it. There has to be. That's the thing. And when you build it, there's going to have to be access to the property of some kind. And that's just what it boils down to. And so, we're going to do it, no matter what happens. It's going to happen. We're going to build our levy, you know. We have to get out there with shovels, and we're going to do it, but—
But is either, are either one of these proposals, do you think either one of them doesn't work, or, I mean, couldn't, could not possibly work for West Safka, or you prefer one or the other?
I don't, I don't see where, where they, they would, where there would be any one of them. Both of them would work.
Okay.
You know. But the, like I say, there's just a lot of confusion with it, and that's the basis for, for the—
Appreciate it, thank you. All right, Michael Funkner. Is there two of you?
I don't think so. Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin and council members. My name is Michael Funkner, and I would like to take my three minutes this evening to share a short video. Chris?
I believe that we can make the findings. The requested use, a tower, one tower is essential. I will agree with that. I believe that we can make the findings, and there's the reasons for this. One is, the forty, one hundred and forty-five feet between the two towers may not appear significant, but one project is greater than one hundred feet away from the nearest residential property, whereas one is thirty feet away, and that, I believe, is significant. I actually believe number two now cannot be met. The requested use, a tower, one tower is essential. I will agree with that. However, we have approved a tower, so is a second tower essential or desirable? I, I haven't seen where that has been proven, and I don't agree with that one. And then, number three, again, I, we do have the authority to approve this tower, even though it doesn't meet the standards of our policy, but I disagree that, again, it will not impair the integrity of the neighborhood, given the thirty feet, which, again, is, is my biggest hang-up for this, for this project. So, for that, the, I believe that this project has a higher impact on the neighbors than the Hart, the proposed Hart project, which was able to meet a one-to-one setback. This project cannot do that. I also agreed with Mr. Olson that we are here to look at the long-term, not just the short-term impacts and benefits. This, in other words, I'm not just considering the construction period. We need to look at this over the next thirty years, because that's how, probably how long this tower is going to be here. Also, West Safka, it is a project in planning, as is this project, and, and as much as the two are related, I also think that we can move the two forward as planning. That's sort of what planning projects are. It might prove to be difficult, there might be additional steps—
I believe, I'm going to have to ask you—
But I'm actually confident that we can overcome some of those, particularly—
Madam Clerk, could we end the video? All right? Thank you, Mr. Funkner.
Thank you.
All right, and last, with Ken Menzer.
I'm Ken Menzer. I live in Auburn. I'm a consulting arborist and expert witness for trees, and I was asked to have a look at the trees and the roads going underneath there. The proposal is actually to put a cloth barrier, geotex, a cloth in there, and gravel over the roots that are exposed. They specifically state to the south side of the tree, where the big hammerhead's going to be to turn around, fire trucks, cranes, cement trucks, and everything else, is where the most of the surface roots are in the arborist reports. And they say, well, we just put cloth over it and put gravel and drive over it. When you get to a huge vehicle trying to drive over the roots, it's going to destroy it. And so, by looking at the tree specifically, they didn't show the diameter of the tree, but it's forty-one feet in, in each radius. So, it's eighty-two feet across, the property being at fifty feet. It overextends the property on both sides of it. This, you know, the heritage tree is actually by, by, in, in West Sacramento, is based upon circumference being fifty inches for an oak, which actually makes a sixteen-inch tree. This, this is a fifty-four-inch tree that's a hundred and seventy inches in diameter. It's a huge tree. It goes all the way across the whole property. Trying to build a road across this thing is going to be incredibly damaging to this tree. As I was saying, you need to do is be able to compact the soil enough. And there's specifically, so, there's a, you can see the picture of the tree there, if you've been out to the site to see it or not, but it's a really monstrous, beautiful tree. And we're going to be trying to put a road underneath there, and it says, don't compact the soil. If anybody has built houses or roads or anything, that's the whole idea, you just compact the subgrade, and you put the gravel on top of that, compact that, and eventually, you only put paving on. But even for gravel road, you'll have point loads that are incredibly huge in this tree. Go to the next slide. So, there's actually, when you put compact in there, you've got to compact the soil, you've got to, you've got to smash the roots, you've got less organic material, which is necessary for the tree to survive, because that's how you have roads, you have less water, less air. And basically, in the end result is, you're going to have trees that are going to, they're going to be in a case of demise. This is a heritage tree. It's not a, is it barely okay? It's, it's a gorgeous tree. So, the impacts become large on there. Compacted soil is, is really, it becomes the biggest thing for damaging a tree. You look at where the branches are hitting that, it's really what happens in the ground affects what happens above. Go to the next slide. So, smashed roots become the other problem. If you're going to bring a big truck over it, it's not just going to compact the soil, but it's going to, but it's going to do that. And so, some things, it's slow to see. Oaks are slow to react. It takes quite a while. At the very end of this, there's a, there, actually, the road going in, there's, there's trees on the neighbor's property, and it becomes case law rather than codified law, called Busca versus Patel. You have to act in a reasonable manner to protect your neighbor's tree. You can't just uniformly cut off the roots or cut off the branches. This is going to destroy not only that one tree in the back, but also the neighbor's trees. Thank you.
All right, we're now going to provide the applicants and appellants the opportunity to respond to the testimony or evidence that's been provided. Let me just reemphasize again, this is not an opportunity to present new topics or issues or raise new eviden, but to respond, or to repeat the same information as before, but, and instead, to directly respond to the evidence that's been provided, or the testimony that's been provided by other appellate or by members of the public. So, we're going to go in reverse order, and first, so first will be Mr. Hart.
First, I'd like to, I'd like to make it clear, I never was intending to try and take Crown's tower away or to have somebody else build it. I was only trying to find a least intrus, I felt that mine was a better project, less intrusive, you know, to the neighbors, better-looking project, ten years, fifteen, thirty years from now, it's going to be a better project. So, I wanted to make that clear, that Crown's going to wind up building this. Let's pick the best project, let's pick the least intrusive project. This is a better deal for West Safka. This is better, because it's going to cost less, it's better for this, for everybody. It's better for the city, you know, across the board. It's just a much cleaner deal. All this other stuff that people have been throwing around, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense. You know, what, what Bill said, that's what I've been told in meetings. I sat there for forty-five minutes with the engineers, and that's what I was told. No big deal. We'll put it in the plans. Doesn't, the contractor's not even going to notice it. On, on a job this big, temporary power, you think he's going to even show up on the bid? They had him a change order six months after he starts, yeah, you'll show up then, but it goes into the bid, it's just not going to be impactful. So, it's just the least intrusive, it's the best thing for the community, there's just no reason to have two of them. There's one, you should pick the best one. If you feel that that is mine, then that's what you should do. I mean, it, it's, it just, and I hope, I hope you feel the same way. I just, I really feel that, that trying to build that on that property is going to be so expensive, and someone's going to have to fork over that money. And, so, I'm, I'm good. That's all I, thanks.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sneed?
Thank you. I also feel the same way. I feel that our project is the least intrusive. We don't have to deal with any levy issues. We are completely away from the levy. There will be zero impacts to the levy. We won't have any utility issues. We won't have any access issues. And there has been a tremendous amount of questions raised about the trees on our property. We do have a beautiful oak tree on our property, and we do not want it harmed either. And I'd like to point out that there are these roads built underneath oak trees everywhere in the state. I, I have some examples for you. Mammoth Lakes, they just built a one-point-two-mile trail, all underneath the drip line of heritage oak trees, asphalted, which is even more detrimental to trees than just rock roads. The Vacaville Bike Trail is one-point-two miles. In Redding, in the Sacramento Trail, there's twenty miles built underneath heritage oak tree drip lines, and, like we're talking about on our property. And they're planning on building ten more miles of this. Let's just show some pictures here locally. This is of our beautiful town. This is when the lower northwest interceptor went in, of a rock road built underneath the drip line of a heritage oak tree. Next. And this is another picture of a heritage oak tree with a rock road of the lower northwest interceptor, built underneath the drip line of a heritage oak tree. Next slide. Beautiful, if any of you ever, and I know you have, ridden bicycles on some of our bike trails throughout the beautiful state of California. This hasn't, happens to be the one here locally in West Sacramento, the Clarksburg Branch Line Trail, which was just finished recently this year. Compacted rock underneath the drip lines of heritage oak trees with asphalt. You can obviously see underneath the drip line of heritage oak trees. As I rode this, taking these pictures, I can't tell you how many heritage oak trees are on this property. There are hundreds of oak trees on this property, many, many of them heritage oak trees. And, next slide, please. Look at the compacted rock right up against the, the trunk of the tree. So, you know, arborists have opinions. We, Crown Castle, had an arborist do a full-blown arborist report on the, on our property with the trees on it. They indicated mitigation measures, like the arborist previous speaking was talking about, and what they thought would, would eliminate the effects of the, the damage, the possible damage to any oak trees. Everybody has their own opinions, but here we're looking, next slide, please. Another slide of, of the same thing, a pathway with asphalt on it, which is more detrimental than just rock underneath the drip lines of heritage oak trees. And I can go on with more examples in Redding, the American River Bike Trail, the Discovery Bike Trail, all these trails built underneath the drip lines of heritage oak trees. So, obviously, there's a lot of people out there that think it doesn't do a whole lot of damage to these trees, and I happen to be one of them. And I, so, in conclusion, I, I hope you will, the city council will take a look at the facts and not some of this misconstrued evidence and misconstrued— I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Page, Mr. Parker?
I'm very disappointed to hear Mr. Hart and his attorney, particularly a member of the bar, represent to you that they have a signed agreement with Crown. That is absolutely not true. What happened is Mr. Hart prepared red lines to the proposed written offer from my client, sent them to my client after executing it. That is a unilaterally executed, non-conforming agreement. There is no meeting of the minds. These are the same type of sharp practices that my client has dealt with throughout the course of these hearings. It's disappointing.
Could I get you to turn to, I believe it was page nineteen of the staff report. It's the letter that I referred to earlier. This is a letter from Greg Fabian to David Tilly dated October twenty-second, twenty, twenty-fourteen. And could I direct your attention to item number A six? So, this is a question posed. If a cell tower was constructed at thirty-one ninety-nine South River property, would it conflict with the levy construction? Yes, it would initially conflict, dependent on part of Department of Water Resources' response, as described in our response. Moreover, a cell tower facility constructed at three-one-nine-nine South River Road would need to be served with temporary access and utilities, meaning permanent access and utilities will not be constructed until the construction of the levy improvements. In order to ensure that the continuous utility service to the site, this is necessary because the property where permanent access and utilities will be located in the future O and M corridor has yet to be acquired by West Safka for the project. So, clearly, we have differing opinions of what, what can be installed as permanent and what's going to be in the levy. And this is from, the West Sacramento Flood Control Agency is clearly stating that, yeah, you are going to have problems being able to provide access to the site. And so, again, we're at this crossroads of, we need to move the tower. We can't move the tower unless we construct another tower, because we can't just turn that off. On this Sneed property, we only need a building permit and approval from Yellow County Environmental Health. That's it. Whereas the Hart property needs permits from the National Environmental Protection Act, the Department of Water Resources, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Services, the National Marine Fisheries Services, and the State Historic Preservation Officer. Well, that's, that's fine, but we don't feel we should be compelled to have to deal with those types of issues, and that's why we are preferring this Sneed location. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Sir, we're not, we're not returning to all—
Oh, no, it's, it's different. It's just that—
No, there's, you, your time was earlier in the, in this hearing?
Well, I thought we got, we were allowed three minutes more.
No, only the appellant themselves.
Okay, thank you. All right, no problem.
All right, so, before we close the public hearing, we're going to, we're going to turn to council for questions to staff. Not, we're simply asking members of the council to defer their, their conclusionary comments and the actual deliberation on the item until after the, we'll close the public hearing for that portion, but for the, for the questions that members of the council may have for staff at this time, and we'll start with Mayor Protem Johannesen.
Yeah, city attorney, the Planning Commission's decision, they made a certain number of findings. I haven't heard anything where those are legally indefensible, in terms of the findings they've made.
Well, what's before you tonight, you are basically acting on, using your own independent judgment on this.
Right, right.
So, the Planning Commission's findings, though you obviously can consider them, are not binding on the council. You really have to independently weigh the evidence and make your own determinations.
Right. And what, what are the rules on hearsay in something like this?
Under our code, we don't apply the strict rules of evidence. Relevancy is really the only standard. So, we're not, we're not going to execute, we're not going to exclude testimony based on hearsay.
Okay, just wait. Okay.
You obviously can weigh it.
Thank you. I do have a question for staff, just so I can understand what's before us and what was before the Planning Commission when they were deliberating. So, in, in the staff report, there's a comment about the federal preemption regarding a direct or effective prohibition of facilities that applies to this project, and I, I'm curious as to whether that, that, that was before the Planning Commission and their deliberations. It seems, it seems relevant to me as, as an issue.
Yeah, that has been a, a theme that has been running through this entire, you know, saga since we, you know, we started this in the early part of this year. Neither project complies with the setback policy in our, in our wireless policy that the council updated just earlier this year. It requires a two-to-one setback from all residential property lines. And so, neither project complies with that, nor really, neither could either project, you know, comply with that, you know, strictly. you know, comply with that, you know, strictly. However, in this matter, this is a, this is a type of project which is somewhat unusual to whereas there is a lot of very strict federal preemption on local review of these types of projects. And if we all sort of go on the presumption that the current tower, you know, needs to be removed based on the planned levy improvements, that absent it, and absent a replacement facility, we would have a significant coverage gap in this area. And so, under federal, under federal law, we cannot preclude the carriers from filling an area where there is a significant coverage gap. So, that, that is sort of the presumption that the planning commission went on, and has been under all along, that, that federal preemption is what would allow them to not apply our wireless policy, you know, strictly with the setback provision in particular. Because neither policy, neither project, you know, meets that or could meet that, that two-to-one requirement. So, our wireless policy was, way it was amended by the council earlier this year, did clarify that the wireless policy would be applied, of course. However, to the extent there would be a conflict with federal law, that we recognize that certain provisions of it may not be able to be applied by the city. So, in this case, that's a situation that we believe we are in, because it's, it stands to reason that if the current facility were removed, and there are no comparable facilities nearby, we would have a coverage gap issue. So, in this case, that is how the planning commission was, accepted that premise, and at least as they approved the Hart project, because it did not meet the setback requirement either.
So, they, they, they took that up as an issue in both, in both circumstances?
Yes. Yeah, that, that was, that is an issue with both projects, that neither one, neither one of them do meet our setback policy requirement for wireless facilities. However, the commission, at least, at least in the context of the Hart project, you know, did accept that, but was, did not approve the Crown project, although they really, they had other reasons for doing so.
So, on, on that topic, so the, the, this whole thing is weird to me. I mean, it's as though, you know, we had a builder that was thinking about building in three different subdivisions, and was coming here, and other, and property developers who own those subdivisions were all coming, and using the land use process to, simply to drive the property negotiations. It makes me extraordinarily uncomfortable, because we're not, most of these are not actual land use issues that we're dealing with. They're, they're jockeying around, around property negotiations, which is not, that's not our role, that's not the role of the public in, in making these determinations. But I wanna, but I'm trying to ask you this, this preemption issue in, in law. So, at, at the moment, there, there's no coverage gap. So, the, I mean, the issuance of a permit, or of a CUP, for a new tower is not subject to the federal law with respect to coverage gaps, because there isn't one. There is a, we would like there to be a coverage gap, by, by virtue of construction, construction of a levy. But that event has not occurred. So, there isn't a coverage gap, in this case. In fact, we're not the agency that would be doing that. It's a, it's a different public agency. So, I, I understand the, the reasoning of the preemption could be applied, but it doesn't seem, feel, I don't understand why, why we've reached the conclusion that it automatically does apply, and that we are, that we are, we are preempted, or we're simply implying the preemption to ourselves, as a, as a, we're, we're trying to apply the spirit of the preemption.
Exactly. That, that's really what we're talking about. It's, I agree completely, and I think that was said, has been said to some of the applicants, some of the parties as well. Today, there is no gap in coverage, because you have a functioning tower. We are anticipating a gap in coverage, and the planning commission, the, one of the conditions that staff recommended the planning commission modified was the one that would say, no building permit until you had a commitment from all the carriers to relocate the tower. And the reason for that condition was, this is an unusual situation. Neither of these towers would be approved as a spec tower. Someone just said, I think I'd like to build a tower. Neither, neither party has shown that today there is a gap in coverage. But in the interest of trying to move the levy improvement work forward, we were prepared to entertain these in anticipation of a gap in coverage occurring. But that's why that condition was, was proposed, was to say, this really is a special circumstance. We only need one tower to replace the existing tower, and we don't want to issue a building permit for the new tower until we knew that all the carriers were gonna move over to the replacement tower.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. I mean, I'm, I'm not arguing we should not live, we should live in a fantasy world where this is not all happening, but only that with respect to the adoption of, at least of, of one of the findings, that the, the staff response to the planning commission was, yeah, but federal preemption. And in essence, the notion that we don't have to follow, or, or, you know, that the setback requirement doesn't apply because of federal preemption, I'm not sure we can just say that, right? That, I mean, if the preemption is not actually operative in this moment, if we're simply trying to anticipate it, that, our anticipation of the preemption does not waive the zoning code. I mean, we, we need, we need to have a provision of the zoning code that allow, or we need to make a special finding or something to do. We can't simply declare that a federal presumption that is not directly applicable at this time waives the responsibility that we have to make of, you know, finding number three, or whatever it is on the, on the first application. It's not, it's, it doesn't drive us one way or the other. It's just, I wanna be, make sure we're being, we're not, I don't wanna set a precedent that simply the anticipation of a project counts as the project.
That's a, that's a valid point. And that, this doesn't take away from that point, but I would point out, the wireless policy is a council-adopted policy. It's not an ordinance. And so, the council has the power to modify
Okay.
the policy as it feels necessary.
All right. Well, I, and then I guess the simpler way would be, we, we, we gotta change, we, we can change that simply. So, we, we ought to, if, I mean, if we're anticipating this sort of situation at, at a different time. So, thanks for the question. I, I hadn't really thought, thought of that issue clearly, but it did help to congeal for me, at least, some of the, some of the stuff. Other questions of, of, Mr. Kristoff?
Mr. Tilly, did Dana, has Dana taken a look at the tree issue?
Yes. This is, this has been a many-month saga. We've had a lot of consultations with Dina, our city's urban tree forest manager. We did provide the arborist reports that we received on the project to her, and she did concur with their findings. It's, it is certainly not in any doubt whatsoever that trees, some trees would need to be removed on this Sneed property. You know, that has been the case, you know, sort of since its inception. And so, we've already sort of estimated, you know, what some of those mitigation costs would be. And there, it's still yet to be determined what, if any, impacts there may be on trees on the Hart project as well. So, trees have been a big issue on this one. We have, you know, received concurrence on the technical reports from Dina, specifically on this Sneed property, project.
Well, it just, it just seems like, on every project we do, trees are a big issue. They get, or they at least get there.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. I don't care if it's in Broad, or in Bright, or Southport, whatever. It just, we've got tree issues. But, on the Sneed's property, does the tree issue affect other property owners?
In our, in our review of this project, and we've addressed, you know, the trees that are located, you know, onsite, you know, on their property as well. The arborist report does address, you know, drip lines as they, as they pertain here. We are not aware of any direct or indirect impacts to trees on neighboring properties.
Okay.
You know, with this project. We'll need to def, in the construction phase scenario with more detailed design, we will need to evaluate that much more closely. But at this stage, the arborist report, you know, with our ex, our internal authority on that, you know, stance behind that.
Can I pop on the, on your proposed conditions, and it's the one that the city attorney referenced as well, which is the, so the priority issuing, is it the priority issuing a building permit, the condition twelve, that the applicant shall present a commitment for, for at least one carrier to move? Is that the, the hook? So, is it, is it, is it a feasible outcome? Since there's not a requirement that the, I don't see a requirement that the old tower actually be removed, simply that, that, that at least one carrier is moving, and that the other carriers have been contacted. Is that, am I reading that wrong?
Yes, that is condition number twelve. That was as modified by the planning commission at their hearing on the, on the Hart project. Originally, we had, we had written it, it's actually, if you refer to the Crown Castle, item number nine, report, we originally had written it that we were seeking all of the carriers that were on the current tower that desired to move, to be presented to that effect, rather than just one. The minimum one isn't, is in our wireless policy. Requiring more than that does go beyond what was in our current wireless policy. But this was part of our strategy here to, to not, to ensure that we would likely only have one tower built in this area, regardless of which property it would be on. The two-tower scenario was definitely not favored by the planning commission, you know, whatsoever. And even though we don't think that is a particularly likely scenario, it is possible. So, that was the intent behind that condition, to have those carrier commitments upfront, so we can ensure that we would not have the two-tower scenario.
And I would invite your attention to page eight of the, of item nine. That's where we point out that there were a couple of conditions that the planning commission revised, and staff's recommendation is that if you uphold the planning commission's action in approving the Hart use permit, you modify two of the conditions to put them back in essentially the form, I'm sorry, I'm confusing it too. Item nine is the Sneed appeal. So, page eight of the Sneed appeal has the two...
Page eight is a completely blank, so are you...
Yeah.
Are you expatting it?
Has the two modified conditions, those two conditions we would suggest revising? I need better glasses.
Can somebody put this up?
You're right. Sorry about that.
Because I'm on, looking at electronically, the page numbers aren't...
Yeah. No, 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 it is page six. So, it's page six of the Sneed appeal, which is at the end of the conditions. And staff is suggesting that if ultimately the council does, as staff recommends, which is to uphold the planning commission's decision on Rick Hart's project, and reverse the planning commission on Sneed's project, that in both cases, you include the conditions that were originally proposed by staff. And those are set out on page six of item nine. One having to do with the duration that the approval would be in effect for, and the other having to do with the requirement that there be written commitments from all the carriers located on the current tower.
And, am I missing a requirement that the existing tower be removed?
I, David, I don't know that there is a provision.
That's all right.
Part of that would be because, at least in the case of Hart's project,
Thank you.
you wouldn't put that condition in, because he doesn't have any control over the removal of that tower.
Right, but the only, the only, I mean, the rationale for the approval of this, and the waiver of all of our policies, is this, is the gap that would be created by the removal of that tower. If that's not a, if that's not a fact on the ground, then we wouldn't be approving either of these. So, that, that seems like the most fundamental condition in some ways of all.
That's a good point. I think these were all premised on the idea that that was, that's the only reason why these are being approved in the first place. But I think you're right, that we can certainly write a condition on both that, that says in effect, no building permit unless we know that the tower is, is being removed. Either because Wasafka has acquired the property, or in some other fashion, we're...
All right, I'm stringing too. Are there, are there, oh, misending, sorry.
Just, Mr. Tilly, when, something else came to mind, that you mentioned the planning commission desire to only have one project go forward. So, there was, there was one project, and it's, and I just wanna make sure I'm understanding the action, because if we took both actions as recommended to us, I think it would, we would be ending up saying there could be two. So, that, I'm just trying to understand our actual action that we would, that's recommended, because if that's, having been a planning commissioner for ten years, I am very sensitive to that kind of thoughtful deliberation and that. So, I'm just trying to understand what's before us.
Yeah. Staff is recommending that the council ultimately approve both projects. That way, by, by doing that, by means, you would reverse the planning commission on the Crown Castle project, and sustain the planning commission on the Hart project. We recognize this is a very unusual situation, because we've never had essentially two virtually, almost completely identical projects proposed, you know, less than two hundred feet apart before. It's, and so, our, our discretion, when we talk about our discretion here with the, you know, federal law, we do believe that there is, you know, the coverage gap issue is a carrier issue. It's not a tower developer area or a landowner issue, for that matter. And even though we recognize that at least the potential exists for, you know, two towers if two are, if two projects are approved, we recognize that, that that's a largely unlikely scenario. We don't have any other tower developers or other player, parties at the table here. We've, you know, clearly heard that Crown has had discussions, you know, with both properties. Crown is the owner of the current tower, and proposed its project as a replacement project for the one that we are operating on the presumption that needs to be removed. So, in this matter, if both projects are approved, we, part of why we should help to try to avoid the two-tower scenario, is some of these conditions that admittedly are very tight, and perhaps somewhat tighter than we would do in a typical tower scenario. Because we did want to make sure that we at least reduce the possibility, albeit a small possibility, of a two-tower scenario. So, the, the planning commission, you know, was, in some of the earlier workshops, definitely referenced the concern about that, even though some of them disagreed about which tower they may have favored, they'd all agree that they didn't want two towers. And I think that has been a theme that has run through this, and that's why we wrote some fairly strict conditions. We rec, ultimately, and recommend approval of both projects, because, you know, given that our discretion on these matters is principally labeled to aesthetics under federal law, and with both projects being virtually identical, we do not see a significant distinction, you know, between the two of them. And even though each one sort of has some of its own issues, we don't believe any of those issues are interchangeable. And thus, we've recommended approval of both.
But, could you not, and, is there not a way to be, rather than try to reduce the likelihood that there's two, to prevent the, the, the two? I mean, if I came and said I would like to open a liquor store in the city, and I'm currently negotiating with seventeen different properties, so I would like you to zone for seventeen of them while I figure out which one I want, the, I'd get left out of City Hall. That's exactly what this feels like. It's, I mean, the real part, the real development interest is Crown. They're, and if, if you're right, they're only gonna pick one, and we're being asked to approve both. But somebody else could buy the other one, once it's got, has the approval, and locate a single, a single cell provider on that, on that tower. Is there no way legally for us to, to, to whip through some mechanism to, to actually prevent a two-tower scenario, or not?
I think we can. I thi, I think there's a couple of things. One, it's not unusual with conditional use permits that the first condition described the project. And there is a description of the project in each of the conditions. We could expand that description to say, this project is a replacement tower for an existing facility at the, at the end of Linden Road at South River Road. And the, the project is, you know, the part, this project can only be constructed as a replacement tower, and requirement that the existing tower be removed within a certain period of time. I mean, we can, we can write a very robust condition, that I think would be very difficult for anyone to argue that I'm, notwithstanding that the tower never got removed, I'm still allowed to build a tower on my property.
All right, I'm stretching our question periods, so let me, Mr. Kristoff.
One quick question, little follow-up on that. So, are we setting up a situation where the first one to the counter wins?
I think that we're, what we're setting up here likely is, you know, who, who has the carriers signed up to go on the tower? This is where also what makes this a, you know, a unique situation, because you have an extremely finite base of carriers out there, and the carriers are the tenants, and the tenants pay the rent. So, whoever has the carrier signed up is the one that most likely has the most economically viable project. Because, you know, these are not inexpensive to build and maintain, and then there's rent paid to the underlying property owner as well. So, we certainly, we assume that Crown, that since Crown does have the carriers on its current facility, that they would move with Crown to wherever Crown goes. And that's the most likely outcome of this.
I think I would phrase it a little differently. It's not so much a race to the, to the counter. A legitimate question has been raised, that although Crown Castle has asserted that all the carriers are committed to staying with them, we don't have any actual proof that that's the case. So, I think the proof will be in the pudding. Many will approve both towers. Whichever applicant is able to secure a commitment from the existing carriers will be the one who will get the building permit. And that's, I think, as it should be.
If I can. Yes, Mr. Tilly, does. Thank you. I get the concept, and it worries me, and, and only in the sense that the precedent it sets up for us on how we manage these conditional use permits. There was a project, when I was on the planning commission, for a drive-through along Jefferson, where the developer did not have any... where the developer did not have any, any occupant or any business owner at that site, but they dangled a Starbucks or Starbucks-like be the perfect tenant. And we fought that because we had, those conditional use permits are, are something that the, that the public has the ability to, in their land use authority, and to, to, to at least articulate what it would, what it would want in terms of aesthetics and in terms of everything else. So it's, it's the leverage we have to get what we want that satisfies the neighborhood, that satisfies what we're trying to get after for a city. So in essence, what you're saying is, we, we don't have any of that criteria in place that, or we haven't articulated what it would take. So we're, we are only going to let sort of the market kind of manage it by giving them two. And I just worry about that concept. Because you're, it's not a run to the counter, but it is, the path of least resistance is going to get that. Once, once the, I mean, it's right, that pole has to go. We've got, we've got a levy to build. So it's inevitable. So it is, it is in essence a path of least resistance to it. And I just don't want to put, I worry about putting a conditional use permit, the precedent we're setting by trying to, we can't decide, or we haven't put in place any policy or any, any sort of other parameters about what we want in that site to do it. And, and we're so far down the line, this is, I mean, frankly, it's unfair to give this to us in the 45 minutes we've had it, and it's been going on for a year, to quickly decide any sort of what would be best for the neighborhood. I haven't been to the site, I've seen what everybody's seen in the, in the staff report. But, and I don't have any, you know, weeks to sort of articulate as it's being planned, which is typically what you try to do. And we're being forced to give up a conditional use permit to them and say, you're allowed. And I, and there's no, even though we can, we could articulate, to the way you said, in a, in the conditions, that we could make it so narrow that only one permit is going to be, going to be, or one pole is going to be built. I mean, I would think that, that they still got the permit. They still have a permit. And if it's that, you know, that's worried, that seems to, it might bring up other issues that we have. Is it immediately void if one is built?
Well, once, once one is built, the assumption is that there, it will never be possible for the other tower to be constructed. They have a fairly short, the staff's recommendation is a six-month period of time to commence construction. As with any use permit, if you don't begin the use within a certain period of time, the use permit lapses. And so it wouldn't continue on forever. And that, that particular aspect of it is not at all unusual. Most use, I mean, all use permits have a period of time in which to commence the activity.
All right, I think we have shifted into deliberations. I'm going to close a public hearing and start with Mayor Protem Johannison, who's been patient.
Yeah, I mean, it is, is confusing some of the information. And I know we've heard a lot of testimony, but a lot of these cases, we haven't really seen anything to back that up. I'm concerned about things we haven't explored, the cost to West Africa with these two projects. I know there was some testimony on one project would, you know, basically cost the taxpayers more. There wasn't a lot more elaboration than that, so there's, but there's some indication that that could be true. And I think from the discussion we've had about the two towers and the carriers, it seems to me if there's a tower, the carriers will come to the tower. So that, the commitments I know are in the, the recommendation to make sure that happens. But whether they're actually contractually bound at this point, I'm not so sure that that's something that's really needed at this point. It's more, you've got a tower, it's going to be the only one that's there, what else are you going to do? You know, I think the castle is, I think, a tower owner, not necessarily the carrier. Carrier's going to have to kind of jockey around to find another place. So I didn't, I find that, that particularly persuasive. But I, you know, I am concerned about the aesthetics, and I think that's one of the things that we need to, at least I'm going to be focusing on, and the distance from the residences, I think is important to me. This issue with the trees, it's going to be important. And I know we had some testimony on bike paths, but I don't think we're talking about bike paths. I think we're talking about streets, and where heavy equipment's going to go, so apples and oranges. So, I mean, those are disciplinary comments.
Discussion, Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is a question, and that is the question that West Africa would be responsible for the relocation of, potentially the relocation of a well, potentially the relocation of leach lines and road or whatever else is necessary to make the project work. Where are we on that? What is that? I mean, is that truly the case?
I don't know that we're in a position to answer that. That's really a, that's a West Africa question. If, if you want, we can explore that question further with, with West Africa staff.
Hasn't Mr. Tilly had, we've got at least some of the correspondence between Mr. Tilly and West Africa staff. I mean, do we, I mean, has that been, I would think they would raise that with you if, I mean, if this is, what is the status of those?
Well, the Crown Castle project does necessitate doing a new well and a new septic system on the, on the SNEED property. At this point in time, West Africa has, has not, not determined whether or not that, that cost for those particular improvements are reimbursable to them to Crown or not. So at this stage, we do not know if the cost for those particular light items will be borne by West Africa or not.
Okay, yeah, a couple of things. The planning commission has heard this project three or four or five times. It's been really thoroughly looked at. And I think if I read both of these staff reports and I tried to compare them, as I read through them, I think that the planning commission thought that Mr. Hart's project would be the preferable project. And I think if you look at what they have said, and then all of these other ancillary issues, so to speak, with the trees and with the aesthetics and, and the different things, I have a tendency to lean towards denial of number nine and approval of number eight, I mean, of 10. And I think that one of the other things is, is I know the talk of the road. No matter what project goes in, there's going to be a road at the base of the levy. There's going to be a maintenance road there, which is going to be for operation and maintenance. So there's going to be a road there so that access to the Hart property really doesn't become to be an issue. Timing may be, but that's up to Mr. Denton and, and our West Africa staff to make sure the timing, the timing doesn't become an issue. So anyway, I just think there's more pluses on one side than the other.
Ms. Sandin?
I, I go back to the notion of having, if we take the action tonight, having to approve projects move forward without our taking a kind of stance of which project the city wants or desires. So I, I'm very conflicted, conflicted about moving that forward. And I think seeing the, this one clip that we were shown from Mr. Lebig was, was really helpful to me when, when we had that testimony to see the kind of thoughtful process that the planning commission was going through in this instance. So at this, at this point in time, it's very, I'm not feeling comfortable moving forward with these, the two recommended actions as a package. So I don't know if I'm suggesting that we continue this for further deliberation, or we have a set of questions. I, I'm not sure that I'm ready to go to that point, or even if that's appropriate. But I'm just, I'm just struggling with, with what these, these actions are together as a package.
Ludesma? Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm sort of leaning that way too, which was kind of the basis of my comment earlier, that we're getting, going on an hour now on this. And I know the planning commission had deliberated this at some, for some time. And being able to see a lot of the, dig into this a little more as a project versus what we're providing, which is looking at as appeal. I don't think we can, by way of process, procedure, this is an appeal which has a time limit. I'm not sure we can continue an appeal. We can? I mean, not forever, but- Yeah, but I'm not sure that would enable us to get any, any further, even if we did. Because like I said earlier, having two conditional use permits out there is not something that, I get the concept, it sort of puts, puts it in, in their hands to figure it out. And I'm just, haven't quite landed out there and setting that precedent in how we manage this. Because it, in the end, it has to be what's best for the community. Mr. Kristoff brings up, we, I don't know with any certainty, and it's, it's no, these folks, I don't, it's, no offense to the folks that testified tonight, you had five minutes and three minutes to give us your views, and no time for us to kind of really dig in about, or have West Africa give us cost estimates of either. But again, it's just, I worry about the precedent we're setting, kind of playing with the market and kind of leading out there. And if it's the right path, I could, I could get good with it. But again, the planning commission has had some time to kind of deliberate this. And it, it does seem to me they chose one or the other. And I couldn't judge which one is which at this point with this, this amount of time. So I'm, I'm sort of leaning at, at, kind of keeping it as the, as the planning commission did. Want to make a motion?
Okay, so this will be a joint motion?
I mean, we have to, I think we have to take action independently on each of the-
I would, right, I would request that you take separate actions.
But you could preview for us what you are, you know, what you are intending on both, but-
Well, I mean, the intent would be to deny staff's recommendation on both issues. So on number 10, or number nine, it would be to deny the appeal. And number 10, to deny the appeal.
Okay, but staff's recommended denying the appeal, I pretend.
Yeah, the intending, yeah.
So sustain the, you would be moving, you would be heading in the direction of sustaining the appeal on number 10?
No, number 10.
I'm sorry, denying the appeal.
Denying the appeal on number 10, right.
But the staff, consistent with the staff recommendation, okay.
Right.
Question, Mr. Kristoff?
So if you deny the appeal on 10, are you approving the CUP?
Yes. Yes. You are holding the planning commission's issuance of a conditional use permit.
Right, that's exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
All right, so when we get, when we get to that item, I will just signal, I will, I would be proposing the addition of those tighter conditions that we talked about-
Yes.
Earlier to assure only one, and that all, they're all, it's all moving or not moving, and all that, but, yeah. Good. So, I'm sorry, so the proposed motion that you're going to would be, is to deny the appeal on, on nine, correct?
Correct.
Would be to reject both appeals?
Right, to reject both appeals.
Sustain the planning commission on both actions.
With additional conditions.
So we'd be left with just one conditional use permit? And so a lot of the conditions would be true, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't need much action, would we? If our condition that talked about just, that would guarantee just one project? Because we only have one conditional use permit out there. Yes, on that one, but the, you could still have the existing tower and the new tower, that set of conditions? Yeah, that we'd want to tighten up.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so on item nine, then you're moving, you're making that motion?
Correct.
Correct? That would reject the appeal and sustain the planning commission's-
Correct.
Denial of that permit. Okay, is there a second on that?
Is that the actual motion?
Yes, this one we're actually moving. So he's given us a framework about what he's proposing, but that's the actual motion on item nine.
I'll second.
Any further discussion about it? I mean, I'll just, I'm going to support the, the motion. This is, I don't like this process. And, and we ought to have it, I don't know if it's possible, but we ought to have some other way to, to let the, the actual applicants in interest figure out their business and then come to us? Because this is a, this is an unnecessary mess, and it requires us to, to adopt findings on one and opposite findings on the other when they're, they are, you know, they're only lightly distinguishable. And so it's, it's, it's definitely a challenge in terms of our legal respect. I mean, it's, I, I get the, the notion of wanting to only approve one, but doing so requires us to adopt findings that this one is absolutely not, we can't meet these findings, and this one absolutely does meet these findings, and they're really not that different. So it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a position, I don't, I don't think the city should be, should be put in in a general way. I understand we have at the time issues with respect to being prepared for the relocation. So I'm prepared to support the motion in this regard, but I, but I would like to, you know, see if there's, we can think about avoiding folks coming to us with prospective projects, not with actual projects with, for permits of this type, so. All right, there's no further discussion, and then the motion is before us on item nine? Does this require a roll call or?
All right, let's get a roll call if you don't mind.
Madam Clark, please call the roll on the motion on item nine, which is to reject the appeal.
Certainly. Councilmember Sandin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kristoff?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludesma?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johannison?
Yes.
Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so that motion carries, and the appeal is denied. So item 10, motion, Mr. Mayor Protem Johannison?
The, the motion is to deny the appeal of the planning commission's approval of the Hart wireless telecommunications facility conditional use permit.
All right, I would simply ask that we add the conditions that the city attorney outlined earlier with respect to the assuring that we don't have the existing tower and the new tower.
Yes, yes.
We will, we will prepare specifics based on that. Does the motion include shortening the period of time for obtaining a building permit? Or do you want to leave it at two years, which is what the planning commission had approved? I think that's right. They approved two years?
Oh, because staff had recommended shortening the period.
Shortening it to six months.
Yeah, the, we originally recommended six months, so the planning commission put that back to the more typical two years. So we are recommending tonight that if, we are recommending that you do reject the appeal, but that you reinstate the conditions as we had previously, previously written, and those are identified in the staff report, which in this case would allow the six-month time period to execute the use permit rather than the more typical two years.
And what is the timeframe for the, for the levy, for the required relocation that we're anticipating?
We, we were informed by West Africa staff that at least some point next, some point next year, they will, they will issue a, a letter to Crown telling them when they need to remove their tower. That was delayed somewhat because their overall project was delayed.
All right, well, might I suggest instead of six months that we, to the end of 2015 then? So middle ground?
Yep.
If I could, David, there were actually a couple of other conditions that we had recommended revising back to what staff had originally recommended. So I apologize that this is, I know this is a little confusing. But on item 10, on page four of the staff report, we identified the five conditions that were modified by the planning commission. And staff's recommendation is that conditions five, 10, 12, and 13 be restored as originally written by staff. Five is, five is one that we're going to, well, five we've talked about. We've talked about adding an additional condition which will add more teeth, basically, to the project description to make that clear. Project 10 was the six-month approval. Project 10 was the six-month approval. 12 had to do with no building permit until all access, all access issues have been addressed. And 13 was no buildings or structures placed within an existing or planned easement.
So I mean, we've discussed a couple of them, but for me, it would be important to know what was the planning commission's rationale for, I don't want to reverse them simply because you're asking us to do what you originally asked them to do, and they said no, without understanding why they made that change, so.
Yes, so the, the commissions, I mean, the conditions as originally written were definitely very strict. There's, there's no doubt about that. And the commission definitely dialed that back, you know, somewhat, particularly on the timing, that they, they thought that the six months was aggressive for a project of this nature, and so they wanted to go with our more standard.
Maybe we can talk about 12, 13, and 15, which we haven't discussed at all. So before we, we're just summarily to reverse the planning commission, I'd like to understand.
Yeah, so on, so on condition in 13, that was, that one, the way the commission modified it was, would end up being all right. That just sort of clarified it a little bit. On condition number, commission number five, this is a very important one, condition number five is a very important one, because originally we were seeking commitments from all the carriers that are on the current tower, that would desire to move, to be, those commitments be presented prior to building permit going out. The commission rolled that back to be much more in line with our existing policy, where there's at least one carrier.
All right, we've, I think we've discussed five and 10 already, and you're not suggesting restoring 15. You just mentioned 13, so maybe 12 is the only other issue?
Yes, that's, that's correct. We, we actually had that, that particular condition, number 12, was somewhat duplicative, and so we actually, it's still, however, that is one that we would like to maintain as part of this, because some of the access issues associated with the Hart project will require some further investigation.
And why did the planning commission remove item 12?
They took out, actually, they took out item, item 12, because it was somewhat duplicative of condition number 15, and they took that one out as well. And that really, the condition was, is sort of somewhat unnecessary, because those type of matters need to be addressed through the typical building permit process anyway. So this was a, much more of a, sort of a belt and suspenders type condition. It was not truly necessary, because those matters have to be worked out anyway.
All right, so we've already discussed about what to do about five and 10, so it doesn't appear that reversing the commission on 12, 13, or 15 is really essential. And if, for me, if it's not, I prefer to defer to the commission's judgment, since although we've spent a lot of time on it, they've spent much more time on this issue. So, Mark, is that, so is your, your motion with the, is that clear to the?
Five, 10, the removal of existing tower and the more specific description of the project. And on 10, I didn't hear it clearly, did you modify that from six months to a different period?
Yes, to the, to the end of 2015.
End of 2015, okay.
2016?
15.
15.
So rather than six months, it would be whatever, 14, or?
Okay, okay.
Isn't that the two years then?
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Is that clear to both the attorney and to the department? All right, is there any further discussion then on that motion? Did I already ask for a second on it? I don't think I did. Is there a second, Madam Sandin?
Yes.
All right, so that's been moved and seconded. So no further discussion. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kristoff?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johannesen?
Yes.
Councilmember Ludesma?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandin?
Aye.
And Mayor Cabaldin?
Yes.
Thank you.
So that motion carries. All right, thank you. Thanks to everyone that's worked, worked on this, and to the commission. I would have just one, one procedural request for the department, and that is the, was the challenge in this report, and just as a matter of process, because we're hearing appeals from the planning commission. The planning commission is the primary, they are the ones that made the decision, to which is the appeal is occurring. This staff report, and it's not unusual, but this staff report presents the staff's point of view, and the staff's analysis, then a short planning commission summary, embedded within the planning commission summary, the staff's rebuttal, and then the staff's recommendation again. And it's, to me, that's too much, that we, because the planning commission can't, it's not writing an opinion like a court would. It's, it's as though the prosecutor were reporting to the appellate court what the lower court said, and that's not giving us a, it's the only thing that can work, is structurally, but you, I think there has to be more attention to providing us, here is the planning commission's full decision and their reasoning as itself, and treat that as, because they're, they're, they are empowered and responsible to report directly to us. They are not reporting to the city council through the city manager or the staff. And then we, we, in addition to that, we need to know the staff's best judgment and analysis, but I would be careful about mixing them up too much, or filtering out what the commission has said, because we're all, you know, we all want to make, respect the citizen commissions. All the information is to say the same, I'm not in any way suggesting that you don't tell us your analysis. We definitely want to know your best judgment and your best analysis. We just also need to know what the commission, what their, what their judgment and findings and their analysis was as well, without having somebody have to play it, take to us. So, all right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one last piece? And that is, I want to notify any interested party that it's time for seeking judicial review of the decision of the city council, as governed by Code of Civil Procedure, Section 1094.6.
All right, thank you, Mr. Attorney. All right, that brings us to council calendar. Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to remind the council that we're going to be, the city offices are going to be closed next Tuesday in honor of Veterans Day. And we're also going to be closed for the, over the Thanksgiving break. Our next public event isn't going to be until December 5th, when we have the Mike McGowan Bridge dedication, and that'll be at 10:00 a.m. at the bridge site. And also a final reminder that we're not going to have a council meeting on December 3rd.
Any questions on the calendar? City manager report?
Mayor, council members, council member Johannesen mentioned the bridge to housing program that the county's spearheading. The housing authority did reach an agreement with the Old Town Motel earlier this week, the scheduled North Leby cleanup, and this pilot program would start next week, November 12th. In addition, the city has finally hired a homeless coordinator, Ryan Collins, will start on Monday, and he'll be housed at PD, and will work with the police department's homeless transient team, as well as our layups onto the county. And then also, longtime employee Mike Lucan has accepted a job with Yellow County Transportation District as their assistant executive director, and Mike will leave us early December. We'll have a farewell luncheon for him on December 3rd.
All right. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing that city attorney report. Are there staff directions for members of the council? We have no future agenda item requests, or a motion to adjourn? Mayor Protem Johannesen moves, and Madam Sandin seconds, that the council be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed, or in none, that motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned.